Welcome to the Lancaster City Council meeting. Let's call it to order, City Clerk.
Councilmember, Agency Director, Authority Member Johnson, present.
Man.
Present.
Smith.
Here.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chairman Crist.
Present.
Mayor Chairman Paris.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. There's no Housing Authority meeting for tonight. The invocation is Pastor Tom Etherington, Lancaster Evangelical Free Church.
If you're so inclined, please pray with me. Our Father in Heaven, we gather this evening to attend to the affairs of the city of Lancaster. May we do this aware that we're under your sovereign hand and your loving care. I pray for our city leadership, that you would grant them the wisdom and integrity they need to carry out these important duties well. We ask that you would cause Lancaster to be a city where the needs of the poor and weak are lovingly attended to. We ask that you would cause families and businesses and individuals in Lancaster to flourish and to grow. By your grace and mercy, may these, your servants, wield the authority that you have given them for the benefit and the blessings of the people of the city of Lancaster. I ask these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you. Can you do the pledge?
Sure. Please stand, place your hand over your heart, and repeat with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands foundation with God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Tonight, we're recognizing the Lancaster Queens, and Councilwoman Sandra Johnson is going to do that.
Okay. Sorry about that, but we can all get the horse jokes out of the way right now that I've had already heard, so I appreciate everyone's love, so thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Oh, thank you, Mayor Paris, for allowing me to come up here today. Some of us know that my daughter has been Miss Lancaster for 2012, and watching her blossom and grow through that experience has been really rewarding for us as parents, and to be able to be up here today and honor you young ladies today is really a blessing. The journey that you young ladies will be going through will be such a lesson, such a great tool for you to use in your adult ages, but we look forward to you representing our wonderful city of Lancaster. And we have these beautiful young ladies that we'd like to acknowledge here, proudly acknowledge, and that would be the tiny, the little, the young, the junior, the teen, and the Miss Lancaster. If we could have you all come up here, please. Okay, and I think Miss Lancaster has some words to say. Wonderful.
As she said, we are the Lancaster Queens. I'm Haley Arntz, your reigning Miss Lancaster. We have our Teen Miss Lancaster, Sarah Everett, our Junior Miss Lancaster, Jaclyn Shaver, our Young Miss, Ashley, our Little Miss, Danielle, and our Tiny Miss, Emily. We are fortunate to live in a city that has outstanding parks, recreation, and an arts department. We have queens that play soccer at the Lancaster Fields, they volunteer at the Moa, we attend performances at the El Pac, as well as perform on the stage. We enjoy the many events such as the rodeo, the poppy festival, the boulevard, the farmer's market, jethawks, and we are already excited about the Christmas lighting. We are very excited to visit the newly renovated Cedar Street Theater, tour the Western Hotel Museum. All of the Queens are proud to represent the city of Lancaster, and we look forward to showing our continued support to the city we call home. Thank you, Mayor Paris, City Council, and the city staff for allowing us to be here today.
Thank you.
All right, I think these ladies have a lot on their shoulders, not just being beautiful, but intelligent and classy and representing our city. Let's give them a big, huge round of applause. Okay, let's go ahead and get a picture with you guys in the meantime. Hallie. Sarah. Jaclyn. Ashley. Danielle. Hi, Danielle, how are you? Can you hold that? There you go. And last, but certainly not least, Emily. Hi, Emily. Turn around this way.
Cream face, turn this way. There you go, cream face.
All right, let's go ahead and stand right there.
Oh, Sandra, before you come back, the Vice Mayor pointed out to me that you may have been violating our sign ordinance next to your name down there.
What does it say? Are you advertising?
Do you guys still love that I get here? Courage is gonna scare the death. It's not clean enough anyway.
We also have the recognition for our Vista volunteers today, who are going on with their lives, I guess. Is that right? It's Michelle, Amanda, and Clyde. Can you hear? There you are. Come on down. and Clyde.
Viasis Narros.
Viasis Narros.
I said it, didn't I?
Viasis Narros, for their work in developing the One Link Volunteer Program and launching the new One Link website. One year ago, these vistas, do they call you vistas? How cool. relocated to Lancaster and made a year-long commitment to help develop a new community-wide volunteer program from the ground up. Since the launch of the One Link website in March, nearly 100 volunteer-seeking groups and prospective volunteers have begun utilizing this platform. Their one-year term ends next week, and they will continue on with their careers, but not without thanking them for inspiring our community to care for others. As for their future plans, Michelle is enrolling in a plant-based nutrition certification program through Cornell and expanding her knowledge in begat and cousine through... Ruby? Ruby? Oh, that... What is it?
Ruby.
Ruby. Plant-based professional certification course. Michelle then plans to pursue a graduate degree from Portland State University for the Leadership for Sustainability Education. Amanda plans to attend the Academy of Art University in San Francisco, where she will be completing a degree in art education and art history. She hopes to design an art program that will emphasize literacy and education to underserved youth and young adults. Clyde will be working in a hospital as an emergency room medical scribe to gain clinical hours before applying to medical school. He will be involved in nonprofits that focus on community health, higher education, and performing arts to better understand community-based and underserved settings. He will be residing in Orange County to enjoy the beach weather. Good. So, can I give them scholarships, too?
I'll take one.
Michelle, right?
Yeah, aye.
Okay, so you each get $500 to use on your education. Okay. Thank you. Okay, let's get a picture. One of you stand over here, two of you stand here. You can't hesitate like this when you're in the emergency road. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Paris, let me also say a little bit about Michelle, Amanda, and Clyde, about the Vista program in general.
Sure.
Just Michelle, Amanda, and Clyde, we all thank you so much. The Vista program is such an amazing program in general, and for you guys to choose to be part of it just shows your character, and for you guys to come to this wonderful city and share your knowledge, and all the time that you've given us, we truly are appreciative of it, and we know that you guys will do nothing but succeed and be honorable people in the community. Thank you again very much for everything you've done. Thank you.
Okay, City Manager, anything to be removed?
No, sir.
Council actions. Any speaker cards on the minutes? Is there a motion?
Move to approve, M1.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Mayor, let the record show, I might intend to abstain, I was missing from the meeting on July 8th.
Okay. Unanimous with one abstention? Thank you. Any items on the council consent calendar we need to pull?
CC5, CC16, and CC13 for Michael Reeves.
Five...
Five, thirteen, and sixteen.
Okay, let's remove those.
Can we talk first?
There's no sixteen.
There's no sixteen.
Is it six?
Is it six?
His card says sixteen. Is it six, Michael?
Yeah, there's three more that we don't have.
The only one I'm gonna talk about is CC13. I changed my mind on the others, and CC13 is the allocation for the homeless shelter. You know, I mentioned to the council before that I would look up the bylaws of the Antelope Valley Healthcare District and see if somehow they could get involved in taking care of the homeless problem in the Antelope Valley. Have a copy of their government board management bylaws, and it's pretty broad. I mean, this power and this responsibility for the homeless situation in Antelope Valley could be handled by the Antelope Valley Healthcare District. For example, in their bylaws, it talks about healthcare, but it says to do any and all other acts and things necessary to carry out the provisions of the District Hospital Act, which is pretty broad. It's a pretty broad thing. So, I dream of the day when the council doesn't have to allocate city money, but the situation could be handled by the Antelope Valley Healthcare District. They could be in charge of the homeless shelter that the council's considering building, and also the homeless programs in Antelope Valley. It can be done, and if I ever get on the board, you can be rest assured that I'm going to pursue it, because I think it's a valley-wide program, it's not just Lancaster, and it should be addressed on the basis of the Antelope Valley. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Move to approve the consent calendar is currently comprised?
I'll second that.
It's unanimous? Public hearing item number one. Just one question, we pulled items, or did we put them back on? Put them all back together, because you spoke. Okay, sounds good to me. Mark Bozegid?
I'm gonna open the public hearing.
Well, that's right, I gotta open the public hearing, don't I? It's hereby opened.
Thank you.
Mayor Paris and City Council members, if it's okay, I'm gonna do the staff report, one staff report for both PH1 and PH2 as their mirror agreements. Both deals are indicative of the success of the Lancaster Auto Mall. All of the dealers, all five of our dealerships in the mall are either undergoing or have undergone major renovations. They employ hundreds of people, and that should not be lost. Both deals are pretty straightforward. Fiat deal will, Fiat will secure 1.96 acres for the fair market value of $430,000 through a 20-year note, and they will provide the city with a 20-year operating covenant to operate the dealership in Lancaster. In exchange, the note will be reduced by 5% each year for the operations until retired after 20 years. And you'll see here, that is the location of the property for Fiat. The other deal, which is a mirror of it, is the second half of the property, 2.09 acres for $460,000 note over 20 years, again retired in the same vein with an operating covenant. The deals are straightforward because of years of partnership and trust combined with continued success, and it's worth taking a minute to explain that so that the public knows, and it's on the record that council nor does city staff do any of this lightly. Let's take Tim and Tom Fuller with Fiat, for example. At the height of the recession, the city provided a line of credit for them to continue operations in our city. We had to trust that they would do that, and they did. When things got better, they were awarded a Fiat franchise. Quite honestly, they had a more lucrative deal to go elsewhere to open their Fiat franchise, and they trusted us that this was the best location, so they stuck with us. Lou and Joyce Gonzalez, our travels with them to open the new Chevy dealership are well chronicled. At the height of all the lawsuit folder all, we trusted them to stay the course, when quite honestly, it would have been easier and cheaper for them to just bail. They in turn trusted that Lancaster was the place for them to put their life savings and their business and open their business up. So, deals like this are done on trust and with people that you know you're gonna work with and that have helped the community. Also continued success. By any measure, our dealerships are successful. If you look at sales, you look at dealership ratings, you look at customer satisfaction, you look at giving to the community. But I think that mass where we've come from. A lot of you know, I remember starting working at the city in the mid-'90s, when the perception of the Lancaster Auto Mall was, there's no inventory, you're not gonna get good service, and you're not gonna get a good price. Whether that was reality or not didn't matter, that was a perception. You don't hear that anymore, because the dealers that are there have not only upped their game, but they can compete with anyone in Southern California. An example, I know Tom is here, when you see the billboards in Lancaster, Chrysler Dodge is the number-one Ram dealership in LA County. That means people are now coming to us to buy their vehicles. So, this is a prudent investment on the part of the city, and it's also a prudent partnership on the part of both the dealerships. We're happy to recommend this to you. I know that we have Tom Fuller in the audience. If you have any questions, I didn't see anyone from Chevy, but I know that Tom would be happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Any questions? Michael Reeves?
Mayor, Council, Staff, ladies and gentlemen. Mark talked about both of them at the same time, so I'm gonna talk about both of them at the same time. I don't have an objection, and I think it's okay to maybe help out the Fiat dealership, but I do have a concern about Antelope Valley Chevrolet. You remember all the lawsuit and commotion that we had about Antelope Valley Chevrolet, and now we're coming back with another thing. I don't think that we should do that at this time. I need to, it demonstrated that it's really needed to help them prosper. And another thing, this outfit that we're gonna do the deal with, with Antelope Valley Chevrolet is, and I'm not a lawyer, but it says Seven Jays, California Limited Liability Company, whereas the deal with the Fiat dealership is just California corporation. Is there a difference in that? Are we making a deal with somebody that's gonna have limited liability if something happens? And that would be the case if we had a deal with the company that wants to get the land for Antelope Valley Chevrolet. That's a concern of mine. I just would like that clarified before we start this all over again, that they make accusations that we're doing something wrong and we favoring Antelope Valley Chevrolet, and I'm not even sure if the lawsuit with Palmdale has ever been settled about. Thank you.
Michael, did you want me to pull your PH2? Yes, you did. Michael, I wouldn't worry about the lawsuit, I think they used all their legal fees up this year. Moving on, is there a motion? I move we adopt resolution number 14-52?
I will second that motion.
Let's vote. It's unanimous. I wanna be clear, I don't have a conflict, do I?
No, you are outside the radius.
No, you looked at it.
I looked at the map, I confirmed.
I can rely on you.
I'm sorry?
I can rely on your judgment, right?
I looked at the map, and the map showed more than 500-foot radius from the property you are.
Okay, thank you.
We need a, we need a motion on PH2. You hoping to public hearing for both items?
Let me open the hearing on PH2.
You need to close PH1.
Close PH1, open PH2.
There we go.
Waive the report from the city manager. Is there any other speaker cards?
No.
Is there a motion?
I'll move we adopt resolution 14-53.
I will second that motion.
Moving on to new business, item one. Any speaker cards?
No speaker cards.
City Clerk, any communications?
No.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve NB1?
I second.
All in favor? NB2, any speaker cards?
No speaker cards. Motion to approve NB2?
Second.
What's this for?
NB3.
Oh. NB3. Any communications?
No communications.
We have Michael Reeves on speaker card.
Mayor, Council, Staff, ladies and gentlemen, you know, I don't care what the Valley Press says, but we're not out of the housing crisis in the Antelope Valley. I have two houses across the street from me, one house next door to me, and one house in the back that are empty. We're still in this predicament with housing in the Antelope Valley. And I have different opinions about the city getting involved in purchasing any more houses. I'm half and half. There was a house down the street that the city fixed up and sold, and I guess the deal was to preserve the house, preserve the neighborhood. Well, the house has large Christmas lights still on outside of it. Right now, there's a large TV out on the sidewalk, so I don't know if the city goes around and monitors some of these properties that we've sold to see if we really improved the neighborhood. Whereas on 12th Street West, I think there was a piece of property that the city sold, the house has kept up, and it's in good shape. So, I'm half and half on this, and I don't know if the city should get involved and buy any more houses with all these houses that we have that are empty. And also, I would like to know if there's a report that has the amount of money that we're spending for utilities and security for the houses that we haven't sold. Does anybody know the status? Is there a big report that says how many houses have been sold and what the condition they are? How much does it cost in the city before we get involved in any more of this? This could go on and on. You know, we can get the grants, but we take responsibility for the property when we get these grants and buy these properties. So, that's something I would like the council to think about. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reeves. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve NB3.
Is there a second?
Second.
Let's vote. It's unanimous. Council reports.
Can we do this first?
Nancy Acosta? Nancy Acosta? Okay, I'm sorry, Nancy. I couldn't see you behind Robert Neal.
The last two weeks, I was unable to drive because of a medical condition, so I relied quite heavily on Dilorite, for which I recently, very recently, became eligible. And for the most part, I had a very good experience. The drivers were very courteous, the vehicles were clean, I got picked up on time and brought home at the appropriate time, so it was very good. However, I did notice two problems of which you might not be aware. I have this face, people look at me and they just tell me things. I don't know why. My cousin Lucinda's the same way. We try to forget lots of stuff. So, anyway, the thing is, the drivers told me they had not been paid in a month and a half, and under the old contract, they were paid every Friday, and under this new contract, they've been having to front their gas money out of their own pockets in order to drive around on a job that hasn't paid them anything for a month and a half. So, I got really concerned.
Attorney.
I got, what? I got really, I'm trying to get done in three minutes. I got really concerned about the drivers, so I'd ask them, "When are you gonna get paid?" "I don't know." Finally, it was like, "Well, I think I'm gonna get paid August 1st, but I'll kinda believe it when I see it," you know? And so then, the other thing is, you know, there's a dispatcher in Nebraska, and most of the time, they were really great, but I kinda nicknamed Friday's dispatcher Little Hitler, because there's the dispatcher, and there's the computer, and there's the GPS, and they're all in Nebraska, and we're here in the Antelope Valley. And according to the dispatcher on Friday, this past Friday, we had to follow the computer's directions exactly.
Well, the house has large Christmas lights still on outside of it. Right now, there's a large TV out on the sidewalk. So I don't know if the city goes around and monitors some of these properties that we've sold to see if we really improved the neighborhood. Whereas on 12th Street West, I think there was a piece of property that the city sold, the house has kept up, and it's in good shape. So I'm half and half on this. And I, I don't know if the city should get involved and buy any more houses with all these houses that we have that are empty. And also, I would like to know if there's a report that has the amount of money that we're spending for utilities and security for the houses that we haven't sold. Does anybody know the status? Is there a big report that says how many houses have been sold and what the condition they are? How much does it cost in the city before we get involved in any more of this? This could go on and on. You know, we can get the grants, but we take responsibility for the property when we get these grants and buy these properties. So that's something I would like the council to think about. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reeves. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve NB3.
Is there a second?
Second.
Let's vote. It's unanimous. Council reports.
Can we do this first?
Nancy Acosta? Nancy Acosta? Okay, I'm sorry, Nancy. I couldn't see you behind Robert Neal.
The last two weeks, I was unable to drive because of a medical condition, so I relied quite heavily on dial-a-ride, for which I recently, very recently, became eligible. And for the most part, I had a very good experience. The drivers were very courteous, the vehicles were clean, I got picked up on time and brought home at the appropriate time, so it was very good. However, I did notice two problems, of which you might not be aware. I have this face, people look at me and they just tell me things. I don't know why. My cousin Lucinda's the same way. We try to forget lots of stuff. So anyway, the thing is, the drivers told me they had not been paid in a month and a half, and under the old contract, they were paid every Friday, and under this new contract, they've been having to front their gas money out of their own pockets in order to drive around on a job that hasn't paid them anything for a month and a half. So I got really concerned.
Attorney.
I got, what? I got really, I'm trying to get done in three minutes. I got really concerned about the drivers, so I'd ask them, when are you going to get paid? I don't know. Finally, it was like, well, I think I'm going to get paid August 1st, but I'll kind of believe it when I see it, you know? And so then the other thing is, you know, there's a dispatcher in Nebraska, and most of the time, they were really great, but I kind of nicknamed Friday's dispatcher Little Hitler, because there's the dispatcher, and there's the computer, and there's the GPS, and they're all in Nebraska, and we're here in the Antelope Valley. And according to the dispatcher on Friday, this past Friday, we had to follow the computer's directions exactly. Never mind how it really plays out out here in real life, you know? So that meant that last Friday, I was the furthest one out. I live in Mayflower Gardens, so they picked me up first because I was the furthest one out, even though I was the last one they should have picked up. So it's a good thing I was dressed and ready to go an hour early, because that's when I got picked up. Then we went down Avenue L, and we picked everybody else up at the wrong time too, because the computer in Nebraska said that's how it had to be. So then coming home was kind of interesting, because they picked me up just fine, 10 minutes after I got out. Then, we go over to this medical place on 10th West, and I would have sat in the parking lot anywhere up to an hour if the guy hadn't gotten on the phone with the dispatcher in Nebraska and gotten special permission to drive me home. It took him 15 minutes to get the dispatcher, Little Hitler. And then, you know, he had to make a U-turn when he brought me home, and I don't know, I think we sort of competed with the Daytona Speedway on that ride home. So the thing is, Friday was kind of a mess, and so I canceled my dial-a-ride for Saturday, and I, so I could get, so I would know for sure, I'd get to the dentist when I wanted to get to the dentist, and I'd be able to get home when I wanted to get home, and not have to deal with the guy in Nebraska. And I really shouldn't have driven on Saturday, I was not really up to par until Sunday, but you know, you do what you have to do. So I just didn't know if you were aware of this.
We weren't, but we're going to be. Mr. Bozzi, you going to start out by finding why they're outsourcing out of state?
I already know.
Oh, then tell us.
Yeah.
Did you have to fix it? Because Ron used to run it. Boys, boys.
The company that currently has it is a new company. We're having a problem with reaching a quorum at AVTA because the city of Palmdale has not attended. So it was on the agenda today to approve their contract so we could do that. So that's why the payments are behind, because it takes a month to get the AVTA board to get the contract, to get them in, to do that.
Well, we used to be paid every Friday.
Wait, it's a, it's a brand-new company.
Yeah.
So everything goes to one company. I thought it was in Utah, but if you're saying it's in Nebraska, I'll believe you.
It's in Nebraska. The old one that they were telling me about was in Utah. And the old one had 10 vehicles, and the one in Nebraska only had two for the entire Antelope Valley, that's what I heard, until Antonovich got involved, and now we have seven.
Well, it's a multimillion-dollar contract that
Yeah.
The board has given out. So it's, as I said, we're giving it to a new company, and that new company is, we didn't have a quorum today at the board meeting, so it wasn't done. So that's a problem.
Were you aware of the new?
Wait, 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 my lawyer
Go for it.
Bells are going off.
Yeah, what's, what's up?
We've got people working that don't get paid because there's not a quorum?
Pretty much.
I don't know how they're surviving.
Do you know that billboard on the back of the bus that says a billion? It came from cases just like this. I mean, that's reprehensible. I mean, seriously.
I was there.
So does the, does the city of Lancaster incur liability based on the JPA? Because there's clearly liability.
Not direct, but we are a member of the JPA, and presumably, any judgments would be paid ratably by the members of the JPA.
So how do we get Palmdale to show up and vote to pay their bills?
Well, you've been working mightily to get Palmdale to have an appropriately elected Until they do, I suspect they won't be attending, but I will get on the horn with the AVTA staff and see what we can do.
Thanks for, thank you for bringing this to our attention, but the one thing I would like you to do is I wanted to figure out how we not outsource this to Nebraska, that we hire a company that will hire people in the state, preferably the Antelope Valley. The first thing. And the second thing, I think the attorneys for the AVTA have to figure out just how to pay people according to the laws of California, regardless of whether or not Palmdale decides to show up or not. I mean, that's just, I mean, that's reprehensible that people aren't getting their paycheck. They're not paying their rent, they're not paying their car payment. How do they eat? Because people won't show up for a meeting. If you would take care of that and report back at the next meeting, I'd appreciate that. Who else is on that with?
Me.
Which one? Sandra? Okay.
I was there.
Oh, good.
Bad back and all, I was there.
Did you ride your horse?
I did not ride my horse.
Her horse is, okay, I'm sorry, what else did you have, Nancy?
Evidently, what I said was sort of news to you, so I've got a couple other things.
Yeah, give it all to me.
Okay. I was in the car when Hitler was sending this.
Well, wait a minute, how do you know that this was a mail dispatcher? I mean, that's a little sexist on your part.
It could have been a woman, who knows? Oh, I know why, because the second driver says I have to call him.
Fair enough.
Yeah, so anyway, now, this is all hearsay, okay? So you'd have to check it out. So I was in the cab when Little Hitler sent the driver out to get me an hour early, and I'm in the cab, and then this other lady gets in the cab, and she said that the first couple, you know, for the first month or two, or however long it was, that this company from Nebraska had the contract, and Utah no longer had the contract, that the cabs were just all over the place, it was just a horrible mess. And so she called Antonovich's office, and evidently, somebody at Antonovich's office said that Nebraska had two entire vehicles for the entire Antelope Valley for dial-a-ride, and whereas when Utah had the contract, there were 10 vehicles. And so evidently, Antonovich got a little hot under the car and called somebody, I don't know how, you know, and now we're up to seven vehicles for the entire Antelope Valley for dial-a-ride. And she said that things have improved mightily since then. Thank God, I could drive up until two weeks ago. Because most of my experience
My concern is, you know, other than the dispatching problem, are people getting their dial-a-rides in a timely and expeditious manner?
Not on Friday.
Not on Friday? And is that because they don't have enough, or because of there's a problem?
I have no idea. All I know is that the computer said I had to be picked up first, and the guy in Nebraska was quite insistent on it.
Okay, we will look into that and get a report back and find out just what the wait times are, if there's a wait time, if people are being adequately taken care of. And if they need more, if they need more vehicles, we'll figure out a way to do it, okay?
And I had a feeling if I didn't go along with the program, that they might not be back to get me.
Just tell me the first time that happened, would you?
No problem.
Thank you.
In fact
Or tell Marvin, he's bigger than I am.
Mr. Chris gave me his phone number, so if you want me to be the guy in the bathroom, like at the VA, what the heck?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, Mr. Chris, you certainly opened a can of worms with that report.
I mean, we did receive two of BYD buses. We're waiting for the Altoona testing to get done on Altoona before we can put them on the streets. So they're there being tested, the drivers are going through them. We have put in grants for an additional 20 electric buses. So we put in for the Tiger Grants for them to happen. So everything is going good at AVTA, except for the dial-a-ride.
So why was there a contract change?
The other company went bankrupt, is my understanding, so we had to find a new company to do it. We're not mandated to have a dial-a-ride, we just choose to have that service, because it's better for our citizens. So it's something that we added extra.
I'm wondering why we can't figure out a way to make the opportunity available for local people with a track record in business to do a startup? If there's a government contract, we could give it to them.
They do have that. The way that it works is there's a firm that is out of state, that they have an individual that is a, gives directions from out of state. But all the drivers that are here are local drivers, there are numerous local drivers. My understanding is there's dozens of them, and they service almost 700 people monthly, so.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Paris, would you like a update on sanitation district?
Is it any better than the AVTA?
Well, I've got some clarity on that office.
Did people show up for the meetings there?
I showed up to my meeting.
Okay, thank you.
And I think, and the Palmdale representative was there as well, too. So let me give you an update, so some more specifics about that office. So shame on me for thinking that somebody that would open up an office here, it would have been small in size, given the number of employees. So they weren't actually paying high lease rates. Come to find out that the office that they leased was actually about 2,800 square feet. So if you can do the math, there was a lot of room for... So then when I challenged why we would lease 2,800 square feet for two employees, then I was told at one point in time, there was seven employees working in the office. And I said, I still didn't like that math, because if you divide seven into 28, that's like just short of four, about three-something and change square feet per employee, so I couldn't figure out why.
Maybe they didn't get along.
I don't know. So they opened the office up in July 2005 on a three-year lease. They did at that point in time only pay $1.03 per foot, so that was actually, would be, you know, right commensurate with the lease rates. So they didn't really overpay per square foot, it's just that I'm not quite for sure if somebody used what I would consider common sense about how many square feet we need. It did come up for renewal, and of course, I voted no to, and I said, we can just move, put the two employees, split them up, put one in Lancaster facility, put the other one in Palmdale, we'll find space over there. I'm sure they don't need any more than, you know, typical cubical space, I would think, maybe eight by eight. So, but yeah, I, it's just unfortunate for three years, three periods in a row that came before the board and was extended, because again, I would have closed it, so, it's closed now, so.
Well, who does this?
Well, it was voted on the board, so. It was voted on in July 2005, again in May 2008, and then again in 2011.
Thank you.
So, but we closed it.
Okay, thank you.
We don't need to spend that money, they can go figure out a place over there at, and I told them if they need to, get signs up at the gate for, you know, direction. So if somebody was to call now and say, I need to speak to somebody, they can go to the facility.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, anything, anything else? Anyone else? Housing Authority, no action. Finance Authority, no action. Power Authority, no actions. Accessory Agency, no action. City Manager, any announcements?
Just one, just want to invite people to come out on Thursdays to the farmer's market. I think sometimes we do a disservice by just calling it a farmer's market. There's a lot of really good music happening there, but also, all the restaurants are open, and you can have sidewalk dining, you can go shopping, you can go see a movie there. So it really is a night to go out, it's not just to buy fruits and vegetables, and we're going to start promoting it as such a little bit more with the Boulevard Association. So come on out, great weather and a good time.
Thank you. City Clerk?
This is the time to address the city council, agency, and authority on non-agendized matters. Please complete a speaker card, which can be found on the back table of the council chambers. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. State law prohibits the city council from taking action on items not on the agenda, and your matter will be referred to the city manager. Thank you.
Kurt Boyer? Kurt Boyer?
Mayor, Council, Staff, ladies and gentlemen. Not long ago, I was talking to one of our fellow citizens, and we were discussing the new Best Western Hotel over there on Avenue I, and the Marriott Hotel on J8. And he made the comment, well, I guess they're building those hotels because people come and use our healthcare facilities. And, well, he may not be correct in his thinking, but it prompted me to think that healthcare may be the salvation of this city. The Antelope Valley Hospital has about 35 acres of land behind its present site, and about 28 acres of land across the street. They need to reconstruct two of their towers, which hopefully will be done soon. One of them was built in '64, the other was in the 50s. They're trying to entice other facilities to come on campus. In my mind, I envision a great medical center over there, where we can have the VA hospital, VA clinic, we can have mental health facilities, the county's approved urgent care, we're number one to get an urgent care facility, we could have an urgent care facility. There's a whole range of opportunities for us over there at that medical center. That could be the salvation of this city. Those are high-paying, good jobs, and Lancaster could be known as a healing community, where people come here to one site to be healed. And also, the hospitals up here are emphasizing the patients now, they're changing the culture where the patient comes first, where the heal the patient is the number one, to get away from the bureaucracy of medicine and heal people. So I just hope that the council in the future will support the healthcare district as it moves forward to entice people onto the campus and provide jobs for this community, because I think it would really benefit us all. Not only with sales and visitors and stuff, it would be beneficial to us as a people to be a healing community. Thank you.
Is there a hospital election coming up?
Oh, yeah.
Michael, you're not running for the hospital board, are you?
I didn't hear you.
I don't want you to have the last word, Mayor Paris, but no, Mayor Paris, you said once that a community needs two things, education and a good healthcare. And you know, we have the SOA High School, which is the best in the world, and now we could have the opportunity to have the best healthcare in the world.
Does that mean you're running?
You said that once, but I haven't forgotten it.
Thank you, Michael.
You're welcome.
George, P D, P D?
Mayor, City Councils, and ladies and gentlemen, I've approached you before concerning the bus stop out there, and you, if I recall my memory, mentioned that it was a temporary, that it's going to be future moved. Is the city in the habit of having the same contractor paid twice for the same job? And as far as the future, why can't city council to try to think of accepting reversing the bicycle lane directions? Because everybody knows how many people are hit daily from behind, and how many of them are hit and runs, not sure if they're dead or not. It's much safer to be on the opposite side, facing the oncoming traffic. Why can't we spearhead something like this for our citizens? I think it's just basic common sense. But again, like I say, I'm very concerned about the little bit of waste of money. We're paying a contractor twice to do one bus stop? That doesn't make any logic or sense to me at all. I mean, you don't pay twice for your oil change, do you?
I drive an electric car.
Oh, okay, but you know what I'm saying, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. What's the story on the bus stop?
I believe that we have it corrected.
I'm not sure of the location that we're talking about right now.
Yeah, I think I, yeah, I think I drove out there, I think we had corrected, but if it was some, if it was substandard work, we would make the contractor fix it without paying him twice. It was also a contract, I think we refunded through It was also a contract, I think we refunded through AVTA, so as I sit here, I don't know what the payment mechanism was.
Thank you. As to the bicycle, that's regulated by state law, there's really nothing we could do.
You can't ride that.
But I ride a bike, and I've tried to do it onto facing traffic, it's very difficult. I mean, the distractors to the bicycle rider are dangerous, and I quit doing it that way, for what it's worth, okay? David Paul?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, good evening. First, Councilwoman Johnson, we've missed you, and, you know, no horse jokes, but I quit--
Thank you.
--riding motorcycles and horses. I love to ride them both, but I've nearly killed myself doing that, so unless I had a deep and compelling need, I'm not getting on either, ever.
Good, you can join my club.
You know, I love coming here, because this is a place where you can actually get something done, see government work. And when I get disappointed with government, I think about the rest of the world and what a sad state it's in, and I wonder what it's going to take to survive. But I know this, we have to stick together and fight, and, you know, some of the things that people think are based on errors, like that government can do these things. You know, we take care of business here, we look out for ourselves, and that's what I love, but the assertion that we could just fix homelessness by turning it over to some agency, that's kind of goofy. And I appreciate everything that this city does to help the least fortunate among us. I know, from knowing all of you, how concerned you are, and that just makes me feel good to be part of something that actually works. Yeah, we have to fix things, but if I thought about all the problems that don't get fixed, I'd just go nuts. I think about the joy that comes from participating and actually getting something done, and comparing it to how other federal, state, county governments function, and that works out being pretty good when you stack it up to the rest of the world. So thank God for the United States of America, and thank God for the city of Lancaster. I love you all, I love living here. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Okay, any reports from the council?
Just, we had a great 4th of July, except for our horse-riding experiences.
Oh, my God.
Could we have Parks and Recreation, you know, maybe have some horse-riding classes before 4th of July next year?
Oh, my gosh. I'm a little concerned about the liability insurance for that one. I would be, too.
We'll corral them tomorrow.
Couldn't we start off with ponies first? Maybe do ponies, and then we could graduate.
Okay.
You think that would have been helpful?
Yeah. I feel the love, I really do, yes, I do. I say this, I just want to thank everyone, we received so many cards, and emails, and texts, and flowers, and just thank you for all your prayers. For six days, literally, I could not walk at all. My husband was literally carrying me, and he's definitely my hero, my knight in shining armor. But again, thank you, everyone, for all your prayers, and as David Paul was saying, that's the time when the community comes together, and I really appreciate everybody's thoughtfulness and continuous prayers, and the horse jokes every now and then. So thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Before we go into closed session, I'd like the city attorney to report as to the records request we did on Lasso, and why we did that, and what the response was.
I actually was the one who saw that and worked with the Assistant City Attorney. We had asked for various information to show, based on the task force that you're establishing, to see if we're getting our fair share, and just to get some basic information, what audits have been done, what information they use, what their funding sources are, et cetera. We asked for five different records request things, and we essentially got told, "Go away" on each of the five. So now we have to play a game with them, and send another letter back and said, "You know what we mean, this is what we want," et cetera, as opposed to just giving us something simple as all audits since 2009, those are public record. So it's very disheartening that a public agency would treat anyone, the public or another public agency, that way. But they don't know that we have a lot of perseverance, so we'll get there.
On that subject, I'm going to, next meeting, appoint Stephen Derryberry to lead that commission, and he will pick his own commissioners to investigate why we're not getting our fair share of county funding, and perhaps to file the Freedom of Information Act lawsuits to find that answer, if we need to. With that, we will go into closed session to discuss matters listed on the agenda as items numbers one through 10, and we'll be back when we're done. Thank you. City Attorney?
Yes, in closed session, the council discussed item one, anticipated litigation, three potential cases, and item five, Courtill's Cares versus the city of Lancaster, case BS122336, no reportable action.
Thank you. The city council meeting is adjourned until Tuesday, August 12th, 2014, at 5:00 p.m. Carol, I'm coming home.